Scott Pet Products is your local expert on developing, producing, and distributing top-quality pet products. We are currently seeking motivated individuals to join our team. Benefits include insurance after 90 days, PTO, 401K, four-day work week, discounts on products, opportunities for advancement, and so much more. Interested applicants may apply online at scottpet.com or by visiting our Rockville location to fill out a paper application. We look forward to hearing from you.
Well, yeah, I was asked to try and get some numbers set for tonight to just kind of figure out where we are and how we got here and where we need to go. It was an adventure. Thanks, Randy, for getting all the appropriations printed out and whatnot. But that one that has revenue on it, let's look at that first. And you know, at the top, you see the general fund, public safety. You see the trend there from 16 up to 21. We're looking at like a 33% increase in revenue in general and 31. Public safety, now that's through 2020. I didn't use 2021 because those numbers aren't final. But see, the revenue's going up. That's a good thing. Yeah, and I threw in some other sources of revenue. Really, well, I tell you, it's complex in a hurry. We have the school contract. It started in 2018, and you see that in there. Partial year there for 21. That's what gone 29, we'll blow 20, or 20, we'll blow 2019. Then we have this fire hydrant fee thing. We have the fireman costs that we're doing. So I threw that in there. So we just, you know, hello, that's a number we've got to remember. And we have the add-to-time shift fire contract. It's been the same forever. Just throwing in some of the revenue sources that we have, trying to get the big picture there. And yeah, and it's interesting to look. Of course, I find it interesting. Yeah, sorry. But you look at the top five sources of revenue for the general fund, and that's what's next. And you see the amounts, and they trend
How big?
All over the place. And you know, it makes it hard to know until you actually get the final numbers from the state. You just don't know. So 39% has been trending upwards from 16 through 2020. See, the revenue's up. You know, let's see, revenue received per year percentage general fund. Yeah, those five funds make up over 80% of our total revenue. Some years, it's almost 90% of those five funds. So those are the big ones. And you're looking at, I guess, down there, doing some expense stuff. We've got our total public safety expense, percentage of general revenue. But the more important one down here is our total general expense for the year. Total general expenses for the year, yeah. And then our public safety expense, which is the line there. That's what I was doing. I took that line for the total public safety expense as percent of total expenses for the year. And you know, we're spending around 80-plus percent of our general fund expenses, our core public safety. This is something that I don't think anybody here really, we don't talk about it much. But it's what we do with our general fund money. We use it for public safety between fire and police. And just a little side note, the next biggest expense in general fund is our liability. General liability runs about 5%, 30, 3,000, why it jumped to 2020. But it runs about 5%. Now, stuff down at the bottom, I want to go to 2.9 right now, that fund. Yeah, that's just a revenue side note. Does anybody have anything to say or question about that? Yeah, we'll go on to expenses. No? Well, all right. Ah, let's take a look at the revenue or expense side. Now, expenses, that gets complex in a hurry too. Let's see, you know, when we hit the 2015, we had a five-man department. Randy, correct me here. I'm pulling some stuff from memory. And by what I see in the payroll ordinance and whatnot.
Wasn't a six-man before?
When I first started, it was a six-man.
Yeah, and then it went down to...
Went down to five.
We had five, I think, on payroll ordinance in 2015. So anyway, we had five. Then Randy, it came in 16, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's when we went to four. Now, 16, 17, 18 was kind of, I believe, I don't remember if the whole year, 18 or what. But 19, we went to five, man department, and then 20, and then 21. We have five, but we're paying for six because of the administrative leave officer. So that's just some historical stuff there. You know, the total wage is here. Police, fire, public safety benefits, you know, it's just pretty basic. Down below, you see the breakdown, and then you, I had to put all this stuff in here just to kind of see what changed and why. You can see the trend in our chief and assistant, and we did away with the sergeant after 15. Then we had the officers, one, two, three, and four. And the school contracts. You know, school contracts, it's expensed out and it's brought in. So it's the same number of both sides in revenue and expenses. But here's the first important thing up there, 63% up there in the total compensation. That includes police, fire, public safety, non-payroll benefits. Well, no, those are public, those are payroll. Sorry. You know, it's up 63%. And contrast that to our expenses, our revenue's up overall general fund. You can round it up to 40%. So here we are, 63 and 40 there. See, it's a trend that we've all known has kind of been there because we see it going up. But we didn't really know exactly how much. So that's what that first thing's all about there. Now, you can break that 63% down, and this is where it gets more interesting. You know, that you have the police, and then you have the fire. And something else, I'm using some public. We're going to say, you're a public. Yeah, we've got one public. The fire is something that I don't think a lot of people realize we've done. The end of 2015, we ended with, we had a chief, and we had two dispatchers. That was it. 2016, we went, well, we kept the chief all along. We'll leave him alone. Kept the chief all along. We went from dispatchers to three full-time firemen, okay? Increased expenses. We carried that through 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. Then again, in 21, they came to us and they wanted to do, we have these codes for inspection, and they wanted to do fire, well, code enforcement, basically. That's for things to fire and public safety in general. And then their idea, they requested we use, I believe it was $48,000 of the fire hydrant fee, which is collected for fire protection, use half of that to offset the cost of this additional person in the fire department. So that's kind of a voice there. But the bottom line, when you look at the trend there, we went, we're up over the same time period as police. You offset that 48,000, the increase in the inspector, and we're up 83%. You know, something I totally appreciate. Are you in fire police? Where are you at?
I was in home police.
So, you know, did you guys, I just didn't fully appreciate the trend there. I don't know many, we never really talked about it. But it's an eye-opener. And of course, you have your benefits down at the bottom, how they've trended, you know, your VICA, PER, VIAC. So, you know, revenue's gone up about 40, and our expenses are going up about 20, 30% higher than that. So that's what the numbers show from reports. Any comments?
Do you have a remedy?
I don't have a remedy. I just put the numbers together. Well, that's where we can start a discussion. And you know, that's one reason we, Randy, we're, you know, when we look at adding additional staff, we have a legitimate concern for some of our expenses. You don't have a copy of here, Randy, here. You don't have any. You're looking at... You know, this will help a little to break it out from the preparation report has so much on it. Yeah, remedy. Well, you know, there's been a lot of talk about cutting the position. And we're actually, what we are looking at here, we were five men. We went to six because we didn't have a fifth on the street. He's on leave. And so we're seeing, well, can we do it, sustain a sixth officer and add that feature? We really never went beyond five. Am I incorrect here? I mean, we did it for the year because we had the money from the care system. And we had to do it to give Randy five officers, and that's what we did.
I thought at one time we had six.
Not since 2014, 2015.
Right.
Well, yeah, way back in the day, apparently, we did. I didn't go back any further than 2015. Randy can't print out stuff back further than 2016. So I didn't, and I didn't have time to go that far, do we? But that's one thing that, I don't know, the public seems to think we're trying to cut from six to five. Well, no, we were at five. We had to go to six. Can we maintain six? Can we, I don't know, I guess, doesn't matter how you look at it. But it's expensive, obviously. I don't have, I'd love to hear some other input. I'm just babbling down.
One thing that's been suggested, and obviously, it's not going to be a huge amount, but there are definitely other ways, and I think we've talked about some of them. But you know, the alarms that they have to go check and the places that don't keep them working properly, and so they go the same place three or four times in a night.
Yeah.
Maybe we charge local businesses an annual fee, or we give them two free, and then anything above that, there's a penalty for.
Well, they do that. I mean, there's a lot, and Randy brought up a whole slew of suggestions a while back.
You could raise your LOIC tax.
Your local optional income tax. Do we have the power to do that just in the city?
Yeah, you do, but there's a process you'd have to go through.
Well, of course. And you guys stood her right.
We'd have to have public meetings and things of that nature, probably.
I'll be calling.
You know, we're, no, 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 no. But you know, we're in favors.
But like, an incremental increase still offsets funding quite a bit. I mean, even though I'm not a math person, but I don't know what our population is or what that percentage is.
Say it's 2,500. I don't want to round up. You know, well, this board is definitely in favor of public safety and as much as we can afford. I don't think anyone would disagree with that statement. And we obviously, we've been investing in it. We've gone all the way in the last six years from where we were in 2015. But where do we go now?
Do you have the school contract figured into 20, or for 21?
Uh, where are you looking at?
Well, you've got the school contract at 21.
Do we spread the train fire and police?
Where are you looking at?
On the public safety expenses.
Oh, the school contract, as far as, yeah, I haven't thrown, I should have threw it in there. Today, we're at $19,099 through the August, I think, report.
Won't that number pretty much cover a good portion of the additional?
Well, it comes in, it goes out. It's covering the cost of that officer. That officer is at school 180 days a year.
Yeah, 180 days.
And Randy helped me. He knows that, that's stacked when the officer is...
Right now, it's stacked when they're off duty.
Yeah, off duty.
So we're just a pastor for the money.
Right, right.
That's all we, we don't, that's not, we're just a pastor.
Yeah, we get paid for that officer, is what I'm saying.
And that just turns around and goes to pay the...
Yeah, it pays for the officer.
For the year, though.
For their days off.
So you get the officer for the year for the cost of the contract. Not a pass-through for six months. It's a pass-through for 20 months. They're not making $40,000 in a six-month period of time. They're making $40,000 over a 12-month period of time. So you're getting an officer for free for six months. That's how that contract works.
Well, you know, that's the way it will work if you take that money and apply for the sixth person.
Well, that's what, you know, I mean, these numbers here are doing that. 2020 is a complete year. 2021 is partial stuff. But you know, these numbers reflect that, and so it's reflecting...
Well, where is it? Is this blank here?
I told you, 2021's not a complete year.
Well, you've got numbers for a portion of 2021.
Okay, but I can, I calculate my percentages through 2020.
Well, I thought maybe you had calculated percentages for that money.
So you're probably going to be around $37,000 or something.
Yeah, that's what it will be. You know, I've got it over here.
$35,000, somewhere around.
The school contract and revenue for 2021 so far, Steve, in $19,099 through August, which reflects the last quarter, last semester, and in this part, I don't want to get any for this year.
It begins halfway through 21. You can't put a...
But yeah, and I could have thrown that, that is the...
Throw in six months in, eight months in.
These came from, yeah. Anyway, I could have thrown it in there. It would be the same as we'll be doing here.
It was lower for 20 because COVID shut the schools down, so we didn't, we didn't get it.
So really, if you offset the 266 and take out that 36, you're only sitting at 230 then on police wages.
Well, that's their wages. You...
You have the other benefits still that you have to account for.
Okay, you can look at it that way. The bottom line, the trends are what they are, and we have to be considering that when we make any decision. You know, again, we're speaking, I had no idea the percent of our total general fund, we're doing around 80-some percent end of the year. So we're close to 100% of general fund on public safety, which, hey, if that's the way we want to go, we can do that. Hi, Ken.
Hey.
Hi.
I was just going to say, anybody have any kind of solutions? Randy, what are you thinking?
If you're thinking you don't have the funding for it, then I'd say take the school contract and put it towards that position. It won't be everything, but that'll reduce the liability for the town.
Well, okay, right now.
And the school said that they would increase, I think it was 40...
I think 43, didn't they say?
Something like that.
Yeah, he said he had to apply for it in next year's grant application. But now they knew to apply for it that he would, was what the superintendent said. He also said that's not guaranteed, but that he has a plan getting it so far.
I think it's 40 right now, what's in his thing, isn't it?
Yeah, and he was asked for another three, is what he was going to do. So that'd put you at 43.
So the school officer would be in the regular rotation, is what you're trying to say?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be on the day song?
No.
So what do you, I mean, what do you guys run, six to six, and six to six?
Yeah. But if I, if we end up doing that, then the rotation would probably be, I'd have guys working in the school month at a time. So they'd be eight, or 7:30 to 3:30 every day with the schools. And then just rotate them back to the regular shifts when they're not working at the school.
So on their school shift day, they're working what?
7:30 to 3:30.
So they're only going to work an eight-hour day?
Yeah.
Are they going to be subject to, if you need somebody?
Oh, yeah.
What?
Like everybody else.
Yeah.
And I said twice in the last month, we've had everybody called out. Hopefully, that doesn't continue, but it can happen.
So as far as staffing, I mean, what's a normal day going to look like? I mean, I mean, I'll figure out what all the teams are.
Usually, one on per shift, except me coming out during the day and...
And an SRO officer.
And an SRO officer. But I've also rotated that around so that I'm out in the evenings too. So it would be the school guy, and then the day shift duty officer. And then me when I fill in days or nights or whatever.
So basically, what you're saying is you'll have one officer on shift, and then a school officer. And then if you come out, then you're good.
And the school officer, I mean, the school understands that if the officer's needed, he leaves the school.
That's in the agreement?
Yeah, it's in the contract.
And been done.
Been done a few times. School's also asking the league to go check on students at home too. So they know that there's going to be some times that he's not there, but they try to avoid that as much as possible. I was looking at these other figures here too. I can see one of your sheets there.
Which one?
I think it's the appropriation, I think.
So on the, these are probably the appropriation.
These.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
And I noticed that the, and it's not on the appropriation report, but it's on your fund report, that public safety's shown 165,000 in the hole or whatever. It didn't appropriate anything this year for public safety at all. No, we couldn't, Randy. The DLG had told Randy that we have to pay a lot out of the general fund. And that's another thing I didn't get into here. But we're paying all our non-public safety payroll expense out of general fund also because that fund's gotten behind, which is, you know, something else can go down that rabbit hole tonight or later. But yeah, she couldn't appropriate anything because they want the revenue to build up in that revenue fund, 249, before you start expenses.
I think the, I mean, in R2, but I think the fund report makes more sense whenever you look at that. I don't think...
And you know, looking at that fund is confusing too because some years, we have done additional expenses for some breathing apparatuses for part, part a couple of years ago.
This is a real, real moment.
There's something else in there a couple of years back.
This is where we started. And then we keep putting the revenue back in, so we're slowly building this number here back. Back up. So that's why we're not using that. So that kind of helps to make more sense on the appropriation side, I think.
And I don't know what this police homeland grant is.
I don't either.
For 76, 47, 51.
It's kind of just always been there, so I don't know. That must have been years ago.
What's the board approval under Fund 249?
So that 76 can be moved back, I guess. My impression, Randy came in 2019, so she has no history that you see really hasn't been much for deals since then. But I believe what we were doing is basically balancing out the deficit.
Okay.
And in some years, it was the total public safety non-payroll expense is very high. But then we had one-time expenses in there, which you have to go back and see what the heck they were. I know there was a breathing apparatus, a one-time fire department. I don't really get to look at that.
Yeah, they were...
I don't give the amount.
43,000.
It was not cheap. There's been some others.
For these cashers.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't have a lot of time to spend on that stuff down there in Fund 249 expenses. We just know we've been over budget. We need to, and that's why we're paying it out of general fund too right now.
I don't know how the board approval line was used necessarily in the past. I utilize it more so as I did with the radios. There's a $150,000 item. You pay that out of your board approval because it indeed was approved, but it wasn't budgeted at the beginning of the year. So that's why I'm in the process of filing that additional appropriation that's going to cover that balance. And you know, we've already received that revenue back in, so.
Yeah, that kind of predates me too for the most part.
And yeah, I don't, I don't know how...
Yeah, it was used a lot in the past.
Why, but that's...
And well, I know there is a discussion on that. We had these expenses come up. They weren't appropriated for it. We didn't want to throw them in some line item that wasn't...
We want everyone to know what they were.
Yeah, we wanted to isolate it, so we came up with a board approval line. And that way, it wouldn't mess up the other lineups. Well, you know, it's, we're pushing the upper limits of what we can afford. You know, this budget here, where we at? You know, the 2021 numbers, I mean, they're not complete because we don't have a complete year.
No, we did, well, we haven't discussed appropriations either for that. But I did receive levy amounts, so general fund levy is at 316,000 this year.
Yeah, this is what this has gone up from 2020 to 2015. This is our, that's our, that's full of that. And this reflects it before the 48,000 offset. Yeah. Yeah.
As far as up from prior to here.
Yeah. This is, yeah, that's the... Well, you know, that, yeah, oh, yeah. Well, I wanted, we can certainly talk about it.
I'm not trying to, it's just a question.
I agree. It's a good question.
You guys make those decisions.
I was shocked how much that had gone up.
Yeah.
And didn't really appreciate it till today.
I didn't know that.
What were you saying?
Oh, I was just saying, our levy amount was 316,000 for the general fund of that budgeted request of 700. Just to give an idea of, there's a misunderstanding of where some of the revenue funds actually come from. But that's how much in property taxes we're estimated to receive for next year.
Yeah, so last year, the full year last year, because we still have some to receive this year, do we not, for property taxes? December, so last year, 287, they're saying it's going to be up to 3...
316.
316.
Where are you seeing that at?
Well, I'm taking that from my budget report. And about some of those levy funds go to NVH. I'm not really sure, but the last two years, that's a whole other topic. But 60,000 of that is going to NVH to help fund that budget because there's been no property tax levy for NVH for two years.
Yeah, that's something else that Randy brought up earlier today about the property tax levy for NVH. I have no idea what's going on there, but we need to question it. You know, another point here that we haven't really, I talked about how the staffing's changed in police and fire over the last six years. The percent increase is on there for you all to see. No one's, where's your paper there?
I don't know, Chuck, look at it.
I need to be watching this. You vote, he does.
I know. I have, I have a memory.
Get over it. Get off that page. Because this is, this is, you know, nobody jumped out of the chair and represented that a minute ago, but...
Yeah, it's up there.
That's, I had no idea. I mean, it's up one of the police.
Yes, it is.
You can see that, right? Yeah, I don't know, I have any answers to that. There's solutions. I'm just saying that's...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we got to figure out a way to fix it. We talked about it. We talked about it. We got to fix it.
An increase that I did not really appreciate until today. And that's after offset. Of course, the offset is a legitimate offset. The fire hydrant fees, which is going to offset the, so you know, it offsets it to 106, 154 on fire. But still, and we have, we have great fire protection compared to what we had at the end of 2015. It was three full-time firemen and inspector. And it's all good, it's all good, but can you sustain? That's the thing. Can we sustain? And you have police here, and we have fire over there, and it's all in public safety expenses. Yeah, Randy? Nobody's, I don't know, will see, look at these pages. But you submitted a budget, revised a budget. I know we've talked about that a couple of times, right? And one thing you had in there that I didn't appreciate until, again, your question, another vehicle for 2022.
Well, we talked about placing one every year, so it's only, so it gets rotated out every five years. Well, we talked about placing one every year, so it's only, so it gets rotated out every five years, which would be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles.
Okay, so that'd be straight one.
You had already appropriated the forty thousand for this year's vehicle.
Right.
When I got the grant for another fifty, so we can give two this year.
Right.
Was that the budget proposal there?
Which one? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, twenty-two, their question, twenty-two.
I come back and stay calm for a second.
Yeah, I, yeah, I remember you.
My addition went on.
So, I corrected it and sent it back out to you. No, no, NVH.
Oh, NVH.
Yeah, the, of the.
How'd it say? It's like, what?
Yeah, you did something about correcting your tires or something. Anyway, here, yeah, I got, I got two of these, I think.
It's two years.
We had the tires, it was all.
Right, I think that's. So, that's, that's significant funding.
Well, yeah, the, the part of the levy from general fund is.
Yeah.
You know, covering that, so. And Randy, I was able to get law enforcement continuing education, ten thousand to be appropriated for next year. Now, this year, as far as on my appropriation, it looks like there's only been a hundred and fifty dollars in any training cost. Do you foresee that as being too high of a dollar? I mean, I went ten, but.
No, because.
I didn't wanna go low either, not knowing what to expect for that.
Now, the legislature has, has, um, taken away our government money.
Well.
We may have to have it covered on both, under both.
Okay.
Right now, and they still said that we're supposed to get some more money coming to the town, but it's gonna be up to how the town spends it, so when you get, um, additional money coming from the state, they may not tell us what it was for, but that's to kind of offset that, so their talent is that, uh, something's coming, but you know how that is.
But it would come in as public safety anyway, which.
Maybe.
Would hope to prompt questions.
Hopefully.
As to where. I mean, I just know that, like I said, that I was like, I kind of went higher on it, I guess, than maybe what a normal would be, but.
Yeah, 'cause that'll cover training and firearms both.
Okay. So, that's good with you? I mean, as far as.
Yeah, we had a lot more in there, but that's, that's fine. It just builds up and supports itself. It's not expensive.
Well, yeah, and this is just what I appropriated for the, for next year, so.
So, here's what it says, um, with the passage to H E A one thousand two dash seven, two thousand seventeen, local governments are seeing change in how dollars from NVH accounts are distributed. As required by statute, the first seventy million dollars collected from the gas lane tax will be transferred into the state highway road construction improvement fund. As a result of this change, local units will now oversee N V I H and N V I H two accelerated distributions. Instead, NVH dollars will be distributed on a monthly basis. So, it looks like they took seventy million dollars out of that fund and applied it to a different fund, is what the state did.
So, are we not getting levy for NVH anymore?
You do, but at a lesser amount. Instead of getting a, a large amount, you're getting a monthly amount that's decreased by seventy million dollars across the state because they're using it for the highways. It's what their website says. I'm reading right.
Well, I mean, suddenly we have to sit there for two years.
Right. So, August distribution, it says for county.
That's probably where the funding for community crossings might come too. Make it look like they're giving you more budget.
So, that might account for some.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at. This is a little, your, per negative twelve percent on that form there, but that's not.
Well, I'm kind of bouncing around here, folks. What, um, what do you like?
So, just so I'm clear, the, the fire hydrant fee.
Yes.
Coming in basically offsets one of our salary.
It offsets the creation of the, what would call it, guy, inspector.
Building code inspector.
Building code inspector. Uh, so, yes, he, he's being offset, that initial position being offset. So, that one oh-six, one oh-five down there in twenty-twenty-one, that says for the budget amounts, these are budget amounts are not actual, everything up in twenty-twenty, it's actual numbers from our appropriation for the year. Um, but, so, yeah, the one oh-six, one oh-five is what it would be after taking out the forty-eight thousand that, that, uh.
So, here. That was received in revenue from hydrants, and then I'll do it one, once a year, trying to stir some water into that. That's how they, um, their plan, um, worked as far as budgeting for that was hydro money. It wasn't anything that's coming out of the general fund.
By adding that, then they're, we're paying up less than what we did in twenty-twenty.
Little bit, yes. You know, the overall trend though, over, over that net department for the last six years, eight percent increase. Um, just, wow. But, look what we have for that cost.
I mean, it's really just adding manpower, because if you look at, like, rate, they're, like, they've only gone up six hundred and forty dollars in raises.
Yeah.
Those two guys.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they're not.
It's in number of individuals, number of employees, if you will. Um, oh, we have, we have full-time firemen. It's expensive. So. Uh, yeah. Well, the other half of that fire hydrant fee's supposed to be going to sinking fund for fire treatment.
Yes.
One thirty-five is when we anticipate next purchase. Put it in your calendar. Well, we'll bring you up from the nursing home. You can have front, front row seat. Uh, I'll be right there when we go over.
Actually, heck, that's only like thirteen minutes.
Is it?
Be running my first marathon.
What do you look for, David?
I'm just looking, checking my revenue on public safety and looking at this time.
Understand some of that stuff? Well, it looks like you annualize what we've received so far in public safety this year is going to be higher than what it's been in previous years, uh, based on what we have so far through August. Um.
It's expected to be around seventy-one thousand this year.
I think we just need to pull the trigger on some of these suggestions they've made and start collecting that amount.
Well, that's one option. Now, do we wanna look at my, Nick said at the load option. I mean, one and done, get it. You know, if the public wants this level, and I'm totally with them, I mean, it's okay. I'll pay a little more for public safety. It's not, I, I'm okay with that. Buy a little public thing, but that would solve the problem once and for all, instead of sitting here and trying to figure out, poor Randy's gotta go out and the other officers and, you know, all these little.
But they're going anyways, so why should, why should, why should a business not have to pay to maintain their equipment? Why are we sending our police to the same question four times a night?
That would be raised. It would be something, but I don't know how many.
But if you take a lot of little things.
Every night. I don't know. I'm just saying, I think we're the one and done solution to the piecemeal zone, but it's more controversial, I would say. Uh, but we should support it, perhaps. I don't know. What's another pers- half a percent? A quarter percent? But I'm proud to say that we have, you know, the size of the department. We have both fires and, and police. I mean, it's for small town, it's pretty darn good. Sustainable, sustainable, that, that's where we're getting up to the point where geez, can we continue on?
Well, I think we can for next year.
Well. Yeah, we, it's, it's, um. Yeah, we, we.
I think we need to quit beating around the bush and make a call one way or the other. It takes a vote, it takes a vote.
Yeah, I believe there is some desire to have a joint session with the Public Safety Commission. Is that correct? I think that was a desire to talk to them, executive session with the Public Safety Commission, and just, you know, make sure they're on the same page as we are. They need to know these numbers, and more importantly, we just wanna talk staff.
I think they've been shared with, with John, because I thought about that.
Um, I have shared that information with John. I haven't gotten, he hasn't gotten back with me, um, but I did, you know, I let him know that he's more than welcome to come in if he wants, maybe to kind of explain how all of those reports. I've sent him a lot of information, so, um, if he wants a little bit better understanding of how they all work together, I'd be more than happy to, to review that with him, which I think is a good idea. I think that Public Safety Commission needs to be aware of how all of that operates, um, to have a complete understanding of how budget operates.
Didn't he ask for, like, monthly reports?
Maybe in the meeting, a police commission meeting, but I, he hasn't, he hasn't reached out to me yet about anything, so.
Well, yeah, it, uh. I mean, he can have appropriation reports and budget reports, like we all get every month.
Yeah, and he's got the recent, you know, the current ones along the ball, the reporting from the last couple of years. He had, he had a lot of stuff to review and go over, so.
When is this Nick, the bitch trial thing?
September something, seventeen again.
So, how much do you know about the load option tax?
I don't know how much, what the percentage is, but I, I did some root research on it when I was looking at funding issues, so I can provide that to you if you wanna look at it.
Well, it, it says one, one idea.
I think you really just have to look at a piecemeal approach if you're gonna look at funding. Try, you're not gonna be able to just jack funding up in one area. You're gonna have to look at multiple areas where you can increase funding.
I'll go back to your. Yeah?
So, I mean, that might be one, but, uh, you know, I don't know what the rate is on the way for the county or the town or any of that type of stuff. I don't have the numbers.
Well, it's just passed from the county to the town. That's why I question whether or not the town can do something.
It was, so it's, it's up to the county council to actually determine that, but the town could make a request to the council. It's the authority you guys have, but the council would have to do that as far as the process to.
Was there any talk at county level about doing such a thing?
Not that I know of, no. I, I don't, then again, I'm not the council's attorney for the county, so I, you know, I don't know what they talk about and don't talk about as far as funding, so I see what makes it to the commissioner's desk.
Okay.
Uh, but that, that just is a local funding mechanism, is why I throw that out there.
Right, right.
So, if you wanna look at that, I have all the Indiana code on and all that other stuff on.
Well.
It's some fun reading. I know it makes you like numbers.
I'm sure it is.
I will tell you, it, it looks like you have some motor vehicle funding coming from the state for this next year, based on their website. They're showing for the calendar year two thousand, from, what was it, to August of this year to July of next year, there's gonna be funding of about sixty-five hundred dollars or so coming to you from the state, is what their website shows.
You don't know, but pay many streets with that.
Right, I'm just telling you what it shows. So, there might be some funding coming from there. But, yeah, they took seventy million to go towards roads, and then you guys are gonna get sixty-five hundred for the town. So, that might be solid, but something to see in that, likewise.
So.
Let me say, we still haven't resolved the issue at hand, and I mean, we don't wanna get resolved tonight. I don't think so, but anybody out there have any solutions?
Well. I mean, um, we, we have the numbers in front of us of where we've been and where we're at.
Yeah.
As far as.
We ended at the last meeting, we'd probably say whether we plan to come and subsidize this issue.
Yes, yes, we did. Uh. It's all about, is it affordable to stay to it? That's the big question. Uh, can we do it another year? Probably. Can we do it a year after that? I, I, I can't say for sure. Uh, but that's my personal thoughts. I don't know. You guys?
It may not be an issue. We may lose some officers and we'll have to force reduce now.
Can we start enacting some of those fees for the people that use it to pay for it?
Well, certainly.
I have a shot for each title check, which we do quite a bit since the license branches entertain them.
Most people try and give us five dollars anyway.
So, no, we, we wouldn't need that, Nick. We need a, uh, an ordinance for the fees, for the various services they provide.
Yeah, I can prepare that if you want me to.
Or, and you want to, they come up with a list of the different actions they're, services they provide.
I think it's a no-brainer on the toe, and I think they pay a fee, get it out of impound, and have to show their insurance and license, because if they don't have either one of those, they shouldn't be getting a car out of impound.
A lot of times the licensed, the unlicensed driver that we've been handling the vehicle from is the one that ends up picking it back up.
Exactly.
And we don't have control with that.
It would. If that's in that steer's.
If we pass the ordinance. Some of them, we've been handling several times, either. So, what you guys wanna do?
About the same amount.
As far as what?
So, is that hit up?
Well, are we going to, to, to?
Yeah.
Meet with Public Safety Commission? Are we going to, uh, okay, you wanna do that?
Yes.
That was suggested to me, and I said, okay, uh, that needs to be arranged. Um. What else?
When do you wanna set it for?
What day is, do you have a meeting scheduled for next month? Do you have some?
Next, what is?
September. It's not September, it is.
It's the sixteenth.
Yeah.
September sixteen.
There's a call date.
Oh, it was September. You have one? September sixteenth is the police commission, is that?
Sixteenth to Thursday.
Is that the police commission date? I, I have it on my desk.
Police commission date is the sixteenth at six P M. Wait a minute. Yeah, six, eight P M.
Okay.
I assume it'll be here?
Yes, it can be.
So, you know, so we have to have a session before?
Well, I can't check it. Our check, these officer has to.
I was just noting that. Our meetings will be the seventh and twentieth.
Right. Well, you need to request a check session with Public Safety Commission, and that's what.
And when's the next?
Sixteenth.
They have us nine, still.
Thirty-nine to sixteen. So, it'd either be before or after that, ideally.
Yeah, I'd like to do it before. I mean, I'm brief anytime as far as, I mean, it's what you guys wanna do as far as having back-to-back meetings on.
Do you want to try and?
Well, what time's their meetings, Randy?
Six o'clock.
See you at five?
See you at five that day.
Well, because we're requesting, we should probably go with their schedule, I mean, hopefully we can just get there now earlier.
Well, they're always planning on that, that night, so that's probably good.
Are they meeting here or what kind of?
We'll be here.
They'll be here.
The sixteenth, at what time did you just say?
Five o'clock.
That's an executive session?
Yeah.
Only, um, only executive session?
Yeah.
Police station, so. At six o'clock will be their open public meeting.
Six o'clock, yeah.
Well, you know, back to the, uh, fire, police, the trains we see here, do, do we want to talk to the fire department, just, I mean, they, 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 they probably already know. They, 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 they seem pretty, pretty, uh, attuned with their budget, but, uh, I'm shocked how we've increased. Not that it's a bad thing, we, we have great fire guys, and, you know, with police coverage, same thing, just what the board want to do for next year. All I did was put numbers together.
Cause you're a lot of, I think, zero on my budget.
Okay.
And I do not know many of them.
That's why I say I don't think they're sending, but they're sending.
That's right.
Important differences.
I, I don't know.
Okay, I'll look into it tomorrow.
That's just what I see.
I know. I'll look into it.
We're really not making any headway here, so.
Well, we're good for next year at this point, still?
Yes.
Thought that's what you said, we're just trying to look at the future.
So, I mean, you guys have to make a motion if you're gonna change anything, or if you're gonna approve something.
Right, we haven't changed anything.
So otherwise you haven't changed anything, but it doesn't necessarily confirm a budget for next year either, though.
Well, we have.
Won't do that until.
I don't know. You'd have to take a formal action to say you're good for next year.
Yeah.
What is the date for your final?
Uh, my hearing will be September twentieth, adoption meeting will be October fourth.
Okay.
Is our next meeting?
After.
Well, we'll call some numbers for you next.
October fourth and October eighteenth, correct?
On what we could possibly be making.
Yeah, we put together a list of the things, you know, alarm, uh, title, you had some other duties.
Impound.
Impound.
There's another one I'm forgetting right now, 'cause I forgot my note.
We're trying to create a common sense, but you want to hear, Randy. You'll hear, well, you guys, you guys, you know what they're gonna say.
What's that?
You guys are already getting paid beyond on duties, why are you turning in? You know you're gonna hear that.
Well, that's how you.
It's not our job to be your personal.
That's how people pay the revenue, help pay ourselves, yeah, there you go.
But it's, it's not our job either to be your personal security service, you know?
Not if they're not maintaining.
And we're responding to, a majority of the alarms we respond to are false alarms.
Yeah.
Very seldom do we catch anybody in the act of breaking in, and when your alarm continually goes off and you don't get fixed.
Yeah, it's, there should be.
It's, it's causing an expense to the town that we shouldn't have to be paying.
Okay, sounds like good engine, man.
We need to light PD here for a couple months.
Do what?
Light PD here for a couple months.
Yeah.
I'm working on it. Just have John follow everybody around for a couple months?
Put go cans on them.
He's got a small enough camera.
Okay, so.
Well.
Think about that. Okay.
Do you think there's anything you can turn on your budget there, Randy, or?
Yeah, I'll take a look at it again and get it right back to you.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna afford a car here, Randy, I know, I, I can see where you're coming up with that, uh, you know, we, we as a board did talk about, I don't know, we did the, the official motion on it, but we did talk about using the revenue from casino money to help, uh, cover public safety costs. Just fifteen thousand typically a year, I believe it's down this year because of obvious reasons, but, uh, uh, it's nothing that's ever been, been dedicating any one thing. We've used that to match money to grants before, we used that to prepare stuff, but that, that's one source of additional revenue that we could use to help offset, I'd say, a vehicle, but that's shy of forty thousand a year for, for a vehicle.
And as, as long as I'm here, I'll continue looking for additional grant opportunities for you, um, I know there was some information put out that most of those grants are matching grants, but that's not entirely true. Uh, a lot of them have not been matching grants.
Yeah?
The hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for the radios was a complete non-matching grant. The radios we got before were not matching, the best grant we got was not matching. So I'll continue looking for those, and I don't believe that the, um, USDA grant was matching, it's just, we already had the forty thousand in there, and he said he could give us fifty, which allowed us to get two vehicles, a little better vehicle, actually, so we'll see how those, uh, how those pan out, those vehicles, and, and the grants will be available again. But also, in the past, I've gone with cheaper vehicles. We could have got another Dodge at twenty-eight-five, but you guys decided to go with a Chevy local dealer, twenty-nine something, so that wasn't my decision.
Right, well, there's a lot to be said for supporting your local folks.
Yeah, there is, there is. Well, and that has helped us out so far.
Appreciate what you do, that grant, that was amazing, the grant we got for the radios, that's just, first, it's amazing what it costs, second, is they need to find a grant to pay for it, it's a lot of money.
Apparently there was every year a timeout, and I'll continue applying for them, and seeking your permission to do that before I do it.
Anything else?
Let's have a run of mine.
What do you want, motion, huh? What do you want, motion? What do you want, motion? Sure.
Now that we got.
We're done. There we go, she made a motion, I'll say.
All very.
Adjourned?
Yep.
You're adjourned?
Yes.
See ya, thanks.